On the Burlington Select Board meeting for March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Can you please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. So before we start tonight's agenda, I just wanted to read a brief statement. Before we begin. After receiving eye-opening and informative feedback from several residents regarding the DEI update discussion at our meeting on February twenty-eighth, I'd like to make a few comments. Many of the emails and phone calls suggested that the Select Board offer an apology apology to Dr. B.J. Addison Reed and the community, which I will do. Some of the comments inferred that members of this board aren't sensitive to issues regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. For the record, I have been married to a woman of color for almost thirty-four years and we're the parents of two biracial children. There have been numerous times when my family has been treated differently because of what they look like and because of their diverse ethnicity. I won't get into a lot of incidents, but some you can't ignore. I know what it feels like when your child comes home from the first day of middle school and asks if they're adopted because a teacher recognized the last name and said, "I know Jimmy Tigges, are you adopted?" I also know what it feels like when your child's been called the N-word multiple times. With that being said, as Chairman of the Select Board, I would like to publicly apologize to Dr. B.J. Addison Reed, to anyone who was upset or angered by the discussion on February twenty-eighth, and to the community as a whole. My hope is that we can work together to make improvements and make progress in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusion for all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I looked at my statement as well.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you. In the days and weeks since our last meeting, I've had some time to reflect. Dr. Addison Reed posed a question to the Board that evening that certainly struck a chord with me. Why did the Board establish this DEI committee? It was pointed, and as one of the members who lobbied for this committee, maybe take stock in what was happening. At face value, we want to be working with the school district to ensure that inclusive and equitable efforts and practices are being brought forward, that the town is ensuring we talk the talk and walk the walk, that from race and gender to socioeconomic status, we are doing our best for every resident of this town. But over the last few weeks, I've begun to recognize that my own perspectives truly color the world around me, that I'm not as inclusive or equitable as I may have thought. That doesn't mean that I can't learn and grow. I need to broaden my ability to understand the perspectives and experiences of others, that we all need to try to walk a mile in someone else's shoes. A good leader will listen, learn, and grow to better serve the community they represent. And from what we've been sent from concerned residents to information I've seen from the state, there's an abundance of information that we can start with. Before moving on, I want to acknowledge not just the folks in the room Monday night who stood up to say something, but to everyone who took the time to write an email to the Board. Residents just like us expressing their concern, dismay, and hurt. I want to thank each of you for speaking up. While I've already spoken with Dr. Addison Reed and apologized directly to her as well as the other members of the DEIC, I do fully believe that all of my talk needs to be put in some form of action. So I'd like to make two recommendations, if I may.
Certainly, Mr. Priest.
The first of which is that all of the emails that we received be placed into the minutes or the records that we have them beyond just a public records request. And the second is that whatever form it takes, whether it be a special meeting or an ongoing conversation, we join with Dr. Addison Reed, Ray Porch, and anyone else in the community who's qualified to help provide resources and educational materials to the Board so that we can continue this conversation in a fruitful, meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I didn't formalize my thoughts into writing, but I've been thinking about them for the last couple of weeks. And if I could take it back, I would. It wasn't my plan to go into that meeting and create a storm. I certainly apologize for it. I hope everyone accepts, and I mean everyone, not just Dr. Addison Reed, but everyone who was offended, accepts the apology for what it is, and it's a real apology. You know, I don't, I have to be honest, I don't spend a lot of time thinking about the things that people of color might think of. But that doesn't mean that, you know, that night that that's who I am. So again, a third time, I apologize. If I could take it back, I would. Thank you, Mr. Priest.
Okay, we'll get moving with the agenda then. First item on the agenda is four twenty-nine, is employment to DPW, Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm very excited to actually introduce my recommendation for our water and sewer superintendent, but before that, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of many members of the department who are here today supporting Matt, as Matt has developed great friendships in the department as his real team player. So we have Tom Hayes, our engineer here, Frank Anderson from Buildings and Cemeteries, Kevin Keen from the Highway, Russ Mackish, Water Manager, thinks in the back, as well as Gretchen Leonardo, our new business manager. We also have Foreman. Aaron Chase is here, Jamie Fillion, who is filling as a Foreman, Nicole Runyon, Mike Giordina, and our former employee, Don Price. So thank you for coming in tonight. And I will be remiss to, if I don't mention the people here tonight from Matt's family, who welcome, will welcome all here to this meeting tonight. So we have obviously Matt is here with his wife, Kim, as well as his two boys, who are sitting right in front. His mom, Ellen. I'm glad you're here, as well as your sister, which I don't think I have met. Well, you look just like him. I should have known. And Gary Garanty, who is visiting from Cleveland. Welcome, and thanks for coming in tonight as well. So it's a very exciting night tonight to actually have one of our superintendents been promoted to a job, and in this case is following Paul Barron's retirement. So we, as we traditionally do, we actually posted the position internally. And after reviewing of the requirements and qualifications of the job, I'm recommending Matt Davis for that job of Water and Sewer Superintendent here in the town of Burlington. Now, Matt is a Burlington resident. He's been with us for about ten years, if I'm not mistaken, Matt. But prior to that, Matt started working with the Winchester Water and Sewer Department, and that was in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven. From there, he went to Framingham, where they have a large water department, and he worked in two thousand and seven until he actually came in to work for here in the town of Burlington. Over there, he worked as a water technician, which is pretty much what he started doing here, as well as doing some sewer work for us. Over the last ten years, Matt has been taking charge of the different jobs that he had as he got promoted, first from the original entry-level job, I will call it, to working foreman, most recently lead foreman. And he has filled in also as Water and Sewer Superintendent in many occasions. So Matt, in those years here and prior to here, had accumulated a lot of experience in both water and sewer. He also holds a D-three water license, which is required for the job. He has hoisted licenses one C, two A, and all the four, which is pretty much allows him to run any equipment that the town of Burlington operates. And he also has a CDL Class B license with tank endorsement. So I'm very, very happy to recommend Matt for promotion as a Water and Sewer Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with John's recommendation, I wish to appoint Matt Davis to the position of Water and Sewer Superintendent in the Town of Burlington Public Works Department, and ask that the Board waive its fifteen-day waiting period.
One more second.
We move consecrated to waive the fifteen-day waiting period. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Say five zero zero.
Congratulations.
Good job, Matt.
Great work, Matt. Thank you.
Congrats, Matt.
Congratulations.
Yeah, Matt, you want to come up front, get some, grab some pictures with the Select Board as well?
Good. I'll be on the way.
No, in the front.
Matt, over here, over here.
Rachel. Hold on, Rachel. Okay, before we move on to the next, next agenda item, Mr. Runyon?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As excited we are, as we are for Matt and his family here tonight, I just wanted to also thank Paul Barron for all his years of service with the town. I think it was close to, he had almost forty years with us, didn't he, John, Paul Barron?
Yeah, that's correct. He, and he worked his way up as well, from laborer all the way to highway service to Water and Sewer Superintendent, so.
Okay, so anyway, I wanted to thank Paul for his, his time here and wish him nothing but the best in his retirement years. Thank you.
Okay, item four thirty, residential pickup of textiles, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, could we pause just for a moment?
Certainly.
What, it's the only way we get a good attendance? With the back of the meetings, there's. How the audience?
Okay, Mr. Sanchez, you're up, item four thirty, four three zero.
So, thank you. So tonight, we're here because I'm introducing what I hope to be a new partnership with a company that will pick up textiles from our residents. And before I get into that, there are a couple of items that may be of importance to our residents as well as to the Board. So last year in October, the MassD P came up with their twenty thirty solid waste master plan. The master plan sets goals to...
We got music playing, yes.
So they set goals to where they believe the state should be by two thousand and thirty in waste reduction, as well as two thousand and fifty. And I use those words carefully as far as goals versus mandates. So those are goals that the state has set to help both businesses and residences reduce their waste. And that includes not only our waste that we currently produce, but also requiring policies that would eliminate products and packaging, and going all the way to items that may be recyclable from the get-go, compostable, or reusable. We all know there's a lot of waste in packaging and things of that nature coming forward. So they reviewed the plan, like I said, last year, and they introduced those goals for reductions over the next ten years, as well to by two thousand and fifty. So the statewide reduction that they set up as a goal is thirty percent on this decade. Now, along with setting up goals, they also introduced new items that they will mandate to be banned from our waste stream. One of them is textiles, and the other one is mattresses. So we'll talk about mattresses at a later time. We're working on a process to be able to offer the residents a place where they can dispose of mattresses. In fact, Gretchen Leonardo is working on that, as she's coordinating regional program, Eight Towns, I believe. So we'll talk that at a later date. We have an RFP open right now, and we're going to be working with the other communities as well. And hopefully, we're able to have answers in the next couple of months for the Select Board. But tonight, we'll talk about textiles. So the new ban is for anything that, as the name implies, is textiles, whether it is clothing, and things of that nature will be also banned starting in November of two thousand and twenty-two. So trying to get ahead of it, we coordinated with a couple of vendors to see which vendor will offer the most benefit to our residents. And tonight, we are recommending that the Board approves a memorandum of agreement with CMRK Textiles. And the agreement was reviewed by Town Council, and I believe you got a copy of it in your packet as well. What they will be offering to remove from our residences or pick up includes items such as clothing, shoes, sneakers, blankets, purses, backpacks, hats, gloves, et cetera. They will also remove by appointment items, small items such as vases, picture frames, small musical instruments, and things like that. Now, all of these will have to be by appointment, as opposed to the last time that we came here a few years ago, which was an automated, you put it out with your trash. This will have to be done by appointment. But we believe that this company is probably the one that is offering us the most into our residents, and that's why we, at this point, recommend that we approve this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mr. Runyon, you have any questions or comments?
Oh, yes, I have, actually, yeah. I'm glad you clarified mandates versus goals and so on and so forth, but some of these mandates, EPA, DEP, et cetera, PFAS is a great example, offering assistance to the communities when they, when they set these goals and mandates and so forth. So this is somewhat like that pink bag program we had there a few years ago. Put it out, and it kind of worked fairly well for a little while, and then sort of petered out for whatever reason.
So the business model they had, it was a little complicated. I mean, they actually, and that particular company was offering to drive the entire town, every street, whether or not anybody had anything out. So that requires a lot of energy and effort, and sometimes people will not put any items out for collection. So this is similar to it, but this one requires you to call, make an appointment, and they will know which homes they have to go on.
Yeah, similar to the white goods and the heavy trash. So we still call Republic for refrigerators and?
Yes, yeah, that has not changed. So as far as the bulky items, whether it is a couch, or a chair, or desk, or whether it is a refrigerator, or stove, or anything like that, you still call Republic. Don't forget, residents can call anybody who they actually please. I mean, this is a service that, some of we offer free of charge, some of them they have to pay for. But particularly items that they pay for, they have the option to utilize whichever company they desire. But yes, it's similar to that, they will have to make a call and make an appointment.
Okay, so, and then just, just given the, the difficulties we've had in the last couple of years with pickup in general, yard waste in particular, we've had this discussion a few years ago about should we maybe start thinking about a municipal type of facility here somewhere in town? I don't know if you think it's time for us to maybe rehash those discussions, or?
So the timing is really good, you're correct about that. I mean, we have another, about a year and a half left in the contract that we have. So, so there are a couple of ideas that have been floated, which I think that we should think about going forward and how to manage, and not just that type of waste, but also recyclables. Whether the way we're doing it right now is the most efficient and cost-effective way that we may have. So yeah, this is the time, right now, that we start thinking about it and come up with a new proposal for the next contract.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Marini?
Yeah. Chris, real quick, how are we going to go about getting this out to the residents? What do we, what's our game plan as usual, the reverse nine-one-one calls, letters?
So we probably wouldn't do a reverse nine-one-one. We tried to keep those for just real big issues and emergencies, but we certainly will do social media, website, newspaper, press releases, and things of that nature as well. Plus, we will include it, if I may, Joe, I'm sorry to interrupt. We will include it in our new calendar that we set out in June. So if, when you read it, this information will be there so they know who to call, which number, et cetera.
Well, one of the reasons why I said the nine-one-one call, because I was trying to get to another point, that if they're not signed up for it, they don't get it. So that's part of why I brought that nine-one-one call up, because if a resident's not signed up for that, then they don't get that reverse call for whatever emergency is. Secondly, does this company have anything, will have anything to do with the dumpsters outside, or are we still going to go forward with our plan on those?
So this is totally, this is totally, you're talking about cardboard dumpsters? No, this is totally unrelated to that, but one thing that we may sure of, as we talk to different companies, is there are other vendors that require us to have their own containers located on town property in addition to having the regular pickup, and we decided not to do that with any other companies. We've seen what happens with those containers, like other companies put out at different places and what people do when they're full. So we're not adding any new cans or containers to this.
So people have to put their stuff out in a bag or whatever it's going to be?
In front of their homes.
In front of their home, and then they'll be designated a time, just like they do now with refrigerators or couches or whatever's out there, just a different telephone number for them to call for that particular stuff.
That is correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a funny feeling Joe was going to break up the dumpsters, so that's why I was grinning from ear to ear. You know, this is, this is great, first off, I think the program's great. These, these types of things are, A, dependent on the residents. Right? Like, for this to be a functional and good program, the residents have to bag this stuff and make the call. And I know that, I'm saying this for people who are watching, right? Because if they just keep throwing their stuff in the garbage, it's just going to keep winding up in landfills and being misprocessed, or, you know, garbage loads are going to get, it's just, it's a complete mess. So, you know, I'm asking residents, like, when you hear about programs like this, take advantage of them, because they're there to help the overall process, right? Like, your, your use of your waste is one particular moment in the life cycle of this, right? There's a whole bunch of stuff upstream that needs to happen to reduce waste, and a whole bunch of stuff downstream needs to happen to reduce waste. This is just our, our role in it. And we need to, you know, do our best to parse these things out so that way, when it gets to where it needs to go, it can be taken. I mean, how many times in the last couple of years have we talked about, you know, loads of garbage being turned away? You know, because it wasn't either clean enough or right enough, or, you know, there was too much stuff mixed into the recycling. It's just, you know, it's a mess, and it's only going to get worse. So the more that we can do in our homes, you know, to parse our waste, to reduce our waste, the better off the overall process is going to be until the processing upstream and downstream get adjusted as well. So I'm just using this opportunity to say to other residents, like, the more we can play our part, the better off I think it's going to be, because then we'll also be showing action taking place. So, John, thank you for this, I think it's a good program, and I'll certainly be using it as my kids throw things away.
If they can open them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, in our house, even our grandson is a monitor and keeps an eye on us to make sure that things go where they're supposed to when they're going out the door. John, I know this doesn't start till November first. Is, how long is the period going to be to determine if it's working?
No, our plan, the ban starts November first, but we're going to start this right away.
Oh, okay, good, all right.
So, so, and we have clauses in the contract that we can, if we don't feel this working the way it should be, we can actually cancel the contract with a little bit of notice. So we'll let it go a few months, see how it's doing. As you recall, we actually ended up canceling the last contract because it wasn't working as well as it was supposed to be, so.
And what, I'm sorry, if I might, what does it mean it's not working, or it is working?
So when, when the residents are told that you're going to be there Tuesday to pick up whatever you put out, and now it's Tuesday the following week, and it's still there, and of course, we receive the phone calls, which we should. And then we'll know by monitoring how many of those we're getting, and whether or not the items are picked up when they're supposed to. We know, you know, at that point, we'll determine whether or not it's working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. John, just two quick things. One, with regards to what Joe said about notifying the residents, maybe the tax bills? And put something in the tax bills?
So, so we, we could, typically, we use our water bills for additional information to our residents as well. And, and we, we find it easier because the tax bills, I think they already hit, there's a cost, by the way, of how much you add to an envelope, which is why we don't use the tax bills, because they already use scholarships and other things, but we do the water bills because we can add.
That's not, water bills are good. The other question I have, a little bit of a concern is, there's a term in here that says on the MOU is clothing, textiles, and small household items. That's a very vague term, so I don't know if people would take liberty with that and consider throw certain things out that they consider a small household item.
So remember, they have to make, if I may, they have to make that appointment before the item gets picked up. That's what the contract says, but, oh, thank you, I was looking for that face. But there's actually, we're going to be publishing this. So, so it's defined, I don't know if the camera is up, but at least you can see it. It defines exactly what they can do and what they're allowed to do. And this may get modified as time goes on. So, so it's a very limited list of items that they will pick up. And again, depending on whether or not they're issues, then the list will get modified.
I just wanted to avoid that issue of ambiguity and say, you know, it's a small household item, why don't you take it, you know? But other than that, good idea, I agree with the others as well, so. We need to, I think, I think we have to take two motions on this one, because I think we're going to ask Mr. Sagorino to sign on this one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This agreement's been reviewed by Tom Council, and as part of your approval, if you could just authorize me to sign the agreement, I would appreciate it.
So we could, I'll be looking for one motion to approve that also allows for Mr. Sagorino to sign the MOU.
So moved. Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Say five zero zero. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Item four thirty-one is the snow and ice deficit. Rachel, just identify yourself for the record, please.
Sure. I am Rachel Leonardo, DPW Business Manager. Okay, so I'm here to request authorization to deficit spend our snow and ice account by five hundred thousand dollars. Thus far, we've had a pretty clunky year. We've had about forty-eight inches of snow. Normally, our average for a full season is fifty-six inches. We've had eighteen events, and normally we have fourteen. And so far, we spent about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and our yearly average is six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A big impact this year is that our four major storms were on Fridays at the end of the work week, so that's a big driver this year.
Got it?
Got it.
I'll start with this, Mr. Hogan?
No, I'm okay, but like I try to do on a regular basis, for those people who are watching who don't understand what the deficit spending is, could John take two minutes, or?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr.
Just give us a very short explanation of what the deficit spending is.
So every year, we budget only three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for snow and ice. That's a comfortable low. We never want to spend under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because if we do, that money is lost. We cannot reallocate that money anywhere else because it is specifically for snow and ice removal. So we would rather overspend and go into this deficit every year, so we don't have to lose that money.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Priest?
Not for me, thank you.
Mr. Marini?
No.
Mr. Runyon?
No, I mean, this is anticipated, this is actually an annual disbursement. No problem.
Mr. Sagorino? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that we budget for this deficit every single year, so Mr. D'Nizio has already accounted for it at the beginning of the year. As Rachel indicated, it's very common for communities to keep their snow and ice budgets artificially low, understanding that we can spend more if we need to to clear the roads, so. But along the way, we're budgeting for the amount we truly spend every year within both fiscal year's budgets.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. All right, looking, like there's nothing else, I'll be looking for motion to approve the snow and ice deficit.
I'll make motion to approve the snow deficit. Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item 432, approval of the Hearn Family Charitable Foundation. Mr. Hearn?
Good evening.
If you could just introduce yourself and give us a brief synopsis of the event?
Barbara Hearn, the president of the Hearn Family Charitable Foundation. We're a 501(c)(3) organization that promotes and, and supports veterans and military families. This is actually our 20th year in operation. And each year, we hold a St. Patrick's Day Gala and raise money for a couple of organizations. Every, they're different every year. This year, it's the Fisher House Boston and the New England Center and Home for Veterans. We hope to give each, each one of those organizations anywhere between $10,000 and $15,000 apiece. That being said, this Saturday, March 19th, we're holding again our St. Patrick's Day Gala at the Burlington Marriott. We have been fortunate enough to have MS Walker support the event in lieu of donating liquor for our VIP reception for our, our supporters, but our special supporters that donate large amounts of money, our sponsors. Thank you, I just found it in the back of my head. And that's why I'm here, one of the reasons why I'm here tonight is to see if I can get approval for a one-day liquor license and also extended hours for post VIP reception as well for those sponsors from 12:00 to 2:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. This will require, this is three separate items, so will require three separate votes. The first would be, Mr. Sagorino, do you?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that the license, uh, the Marriott is a licensed facility and what makes this request unique is the donation of the wine to the event. So that's what we'll be approving essentially this evening, aside from the change in the hours.
Right, and we, I know we've had this event before several times, it's just, we have to do this because of the donation aspect. So we need three separate approvals. I'll just go through them and then I'll have someone make a motion. The first approval is going to be for the charity wine license for the Hearn Family Charitable Foundation. The second approval is going to be, is an approval for accepting the charity alcohol. And the third approval is the extension of the closing hours. So do I have a motion on the first?
Can we ask a couple of questions first?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Marini, I'm sorry.
So I have it here when it is and stuff, but could you tell the residents when it is or is it a private event or is it?
No, it's public. We, uh, social media, newspaper, all that good stuff.
Okay, and how would the residents go about finding out about it? If they, can they go online, is there?
Well, unfortunately, we're sold out.
Okay.
But, but they can find out about our foundation, yes.
And they could also find out if there's a way to donate without even being at the event?
Yes, sir.
At that, at that event. And how many years have you been doing this now?
20, it's our 20th year.
They knew that, I just wanted the residents to hear. So, no, I think it's a great event and I think that you're a charitable person for doing this kind of stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Mr. Renian?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, could I offer a fourth, uh, item to the, to the, an amendment to your, your items and ask that the board waive the $75 fee for the special license?
Can I ask town council, can we amend an agenda item like that?
You, you can, it's an amendment to the existing motion, so you can do that.
So that'll be a fourth approval, or a fourth request, correct?
Would it be an amendment to the first request?
Right, I would say it's an amendment to the first request to, to grant the charity wine license and waive the fee.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Mr., are you, anything else, Mr. Renian? Mr. Priest?
Uh, no, I, I support the fee waiver.
Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
First of all. And could I ask a favor?
Sure.
Could you give us a little more lead time?
Yes.
I mean, four or five days of something, if we were to lose a piece of paper in that short time, we wouldn't want to screw this up.
Absolutely, that's our bad, and I apologize for that. I know things get, things got a little bit confusing.
I'm sure you have a few things on your mind.
Just a bit, just a bit.
But again, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, I have no questions.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, uh, number one, pull a charity wine license for the Hearn Family Charitable Foundation with the amendment of a $75 fee being waived.
Okay, that's been, motion's been made?
I'll second that.
It's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Make a motion to approve acceptable charity alcohol. Second.
Second by Mr. Hogan, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I'd like to make another motion to extend the hours of closing till 2:00 a.m., you said?
2:00 a.m., yes, sir.
Till 2:00 a.m.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. You're all set, Mr. Hearn?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy safe travels, stay safe.
Okay, item 433 on the agenda is approval of a Carmen Victoras license for Bennett's Sandwich Shop. I assume someone's from, Brendan from Bennett's is on?
On Webex.
Brendan, can you give us a little update on this item?
Absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. It's an honor to be here and to be serving Bennett's sandwiches to the great community of Burlington. We're a fam, family-owned and operated establishment, have locations in Kennybunk, Maine, Portsmouth, New Hampshire, the Fenway neighborhood of Boston, and are really excited and honored to be in Burlington.
Okay, um, anybody on the board have a, Michael, I'll start with you, do you have any questions for?
You know, I was in Kennybunk over the weekend, I didn't see your signature shop up there, but.
Thank you, well, we're actually, we're seasonal in Kennybunk, so we're in towards the end of Maine and close down around Labor Day. But we're perhaps the busiest establishment in Kennybunk, so, so definitely, if you're up there over the summer, please visit us.
Will do. Thank you.
Mr. Marini?
Uh, no, thank you.
No, I'm good.
Chair has none either. So, with that being said, for approval for Carmen Victoras license for Bennett's Sandwich Shop, 75-06 Turnpike.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Congratulations.
Hey, thank you very much, everybody, we look forward to serving you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 434 has been canceled. The event has been canceled, so we'll go to item 435. It's a, a continued public hearing on the all-alcohol Del Frisco's closure update. Mr. Sagorino?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been in contact with the attorneys for this transaction and they're not quite ready to go yet, so they've asked for a continuance till April 11th on or after 6:00 p.m. please.
Okay, I'll be looking for a motion to continue this public hearing.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing till?
April 11th?
April 11th.
On or after 6:00 p.m. Okay, is there a second?
Yeah.
Moving seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, continue to April 11th, 2022, on or after 6:00 p.m. Okay, item 436 is a presentation on the MBTA Housing Choice Program. Attorney, you mean?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr., I'll go to Mr. Sagorino first.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, I can just say a few words. Some new legislation at state level. There are some requirements that are going to be put on the town over the, over the next year or two, and we're going to have to work together as a team to meet these requirements as we move forward. And to that end, this is the first step in the process and we've invited members of the land use boards here to participate in this with us this evening. We also have our planning director, Kristin Kastner, and our economic development director, Melissa Tatakus, are both in the Zoom meeting as well. And we have our town council here, Lisa and me, to give us the presentation on, on what this legislation means for Burlington.
Lisa, I apologize, I missed my own note that said go to Paul first.
That's all.
Now I'll turn it over to you.
I'm happy to be preceded by Paul anytime. So thank you, Chair and members of the board for having me here and all the land use committees and folks that have had decided to attend. As Paul indicated, in 2020, the legislature passed a new piece of legislation. The first requirement is that we do a presentation to this board about the requirements and guidelines. So that's what we're here to do tonight. Kristin Kastner's going to participate in this presentation. I want to thank Kristin and Liz for helping to put together a number of the slides toward the end relative to how this actually applies specifically to your land area and what the, what the impacts might be. So we're going to have an introduction and purpose, we're going to talk to you about the timeline, talk to you about why Burlington is an MBTA community, the summary of the guidelines, what are the requirements for the town, and what happens if there is non-compliance. So as I said earlier, in 2020, a new piece of legislation was added, Section 3A of Chapter 40A of the general laws, which is the zoning act, which requires communities to adopt multifamily housing zoning. I just want to add here that as part of that same legislation, Section 9 was amended, which goes to how we adopt zoning related to multifamily housing and accessory dwelling units. We're not talking about that tonight, but it was part of the same legislation, which we can, we'll probably be discussing closer to town meeting because it affects some of the articles at town meeting. This act, Section 3A of Chapter 40A, requires that an MBTA community shall, requires, have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right and meets other criteria set forth in the statute. It requires a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, not more than a half mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if that's applicable. We're going to talk a little bit about how that applies to Burlington because you have none of those. The purpose is to encourage MBTA communities to adopt zoning districts where multifamily housing is permitted as of right, and you're going to hear that over and over in this presentation because that's new for many communities. So the timeline is this, the first public comment period on the draft guidelines, which have been out for about a month and a half now, is due at the end of March, March 31st. And so the town thought it was important to have this presentation now before the draft guidelines were finalized to help aid the town in providing any comments the town wanted to make to DHCD and EOEA relative to the guidelines. Then an MBTA community must take the following action by 5:00 p.m. on May 2nd. Include a presentation of the draft guidelines in the meeting to the select board, that's what we're doing tonight. Complete and submit the MBTA community information form, which is a very simple form that says we're doing this tonight. And then submit updated GIS parcel maps. By the Burlington, there's actually only a few communities in the Commonwealth that are in the MBTA area that need to update the GIS maps, but Burlington's are up to date. So doing this and submitting the form by the first part of May is what the first step you're required to do and we'll get over that hump tonight. The next time is by December 31st of this year, a community must submit a request for determination of full compliance. So if the community did a review and decided they were actually already in full compliance, you have, you have as-of-right zoning that allows multifamily at this density, then you'd be done at the end of the year. So you would see if you had full compliance. Burlington won't be in full compliance by then, as are most communities, but that is an option. You would have to notify DHCD that there's no existing compliant multifamily housing and submit a proposed action plan by a certain deadline, which we're going to talk about in a minute. So that's more likely that's going to be Burlington's job is that we'll say, we're not in compliance, but we're going to have an action plan. And for bus service communities, which is what Burlington is, the action pla, the action plan has to be submitted by March 1st of 2023, so just under a year. We have to have an action plan submitted. And then the multifamily zoning district adoption deadline is December 31st of 2023. So by the end of this year, we're going to say we're not in compliance, and by March of next year, you're going to have an action plan in place, and then by the end of the year, you actually have to have adopted the zoning. So if you think about the town meeting process and the hearings necessary to go through that process, it's actually a pretty tight timeframe to adopt some pretty significant zoning. And then after that, the community has to submit a request for determination of compliance to DHCD within 90 days of adopting the zoning amendments. So if you were to adopt the zoning amendments in the September town meeting next year, for example, within 90 days of that, you would have to submit that form to DHCD. So, so what is Burlington as an MBTA community? You are a bus service community, which means an MBTA community with a bus station within its borders or within a half mile of its borders, or an MBTA bus stop within its borders and no subway station or commuter rail station within its border or within a half miles. So you have bus stops. And in Burlington, you have, that means your minimum multifamily district unit capacity requirement would be 2,086 units. So I just wanted you to see also specifically the statute because it, it goes to the, the requirements of these units. So first of all, the district has to be reasonable size in which your multifamily housing is permitted by right. Talk to you in a minute about what reasonable size means. It means that the unit is with, the units are without age restriction and are suitable for families with children. Reasonable size means it has a minimum density of 15 units per acre and then subject to limitations on wetlands and things of that nature, and not located within more than a half mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if that's applicable. So reasonable size is relative, not absolute. So if the town were to submit something that was close, so let's say you couldn't have a section that's less than five acres, but it was 4.8, and you had reason for that, DHCD might permit that, but they're likely not to permit something that's just an acre. So there's a reasonable size, it's not an absolute determination, but it's been pretty clear to everybody that they're going to pretty much stick to these guidelines. DHCD will take into consideration both the area of the district and the district's multifamily unit capacity, that is, the number of units that can be developed as of right within the district. Multifamily districts should not be a single development site, but must comprise at least 50 acres of land or approximately 1/10 of the land area within a half mile of the transit station. So it doesn't have to be 50 acres in total, I mean, excuse me, for one parcel, but in total, it needs to be 50 acres. You can use an overlay district to comply. At least one portion of the overlay must include at least 25 contiguous acres of land, and no portion less than five contiguous acres will count toward the minimum size requirements. Multifamily districts should be in areas that have safe and convenient access to transit stations for pedestrians and bicyclists to the maximum extent feasible. So let's talk about the minimum unit capacity. So the minimum multifamily unit capacity, you must provide an accurate assessment of the number of multifamily housing units that can be developed as of right within the district, referred to as the district's unit capacity, and the capacity must be equal to or greater than the specified percentage of the total number of housing units within the community. Okay, so we've already said what that is, it's just over 2,004, the town of Burlington, So we don't need to go into the calculation, but essentially, when you look at the calculation, if you decide what your land areas are, you take, you say, it's called a gross unit capacity because you can take into consideration roads and streets, but you can't take into consideration things like wetlands or hazardous waste sites. So if, or deed restricted properties. So if you had a parcel of five acres, two and a half of which was deed restricted somehow, that wouldn't count. You go to the next slide. And I, I would reiterate here again that the Commonwealth is very clear that they're not requiring you to create housing, they're requiring you to create zoning which allows housing to be created. And I think that's a, a pretty big difference. So what is as-of-right? As-of-right means without the need to obtain any discretionary permit or approval. It does allow for site plan review, which is true site plan review, which the town of Burlington has, and it may be required for multifamily uses, allowed as-of-right to ensure public safety and convenience, regulated vehicular access and circulation on site, architectural design of buildings, and screenings of adjacent properties. The conditions cannot make a project infeasible or impractical. So I'm, I'm going to go in to have as-of-right housing by certain density on a certain square footage of area. I can still, the town can still require that to go through site plan review. The site plan review board here, the planning board, would not be permitted to put conditions on that, which would not make it feasible, but it would still be an as of right review to allow site plan review. I would add here that, and as we go through that, you can make conditions in the zoning, much like in a forty R district, that requires thing, certain amount of parking, of course, design requirements, so that if a person came in with an as of right proposal, it did need certain requirements that the town had short of a special permit. It just sets them out in the zoning. Here's what they clearly are. Go through site plan review, and you can get your as of right permit. So it's not like you just have to say it's as of right, and you get to go build whatever you want to build. You do get to do some parameters around like, around that like you would any other zoning. So the multifamily housing is without age restriction and shall be suitable for families with children. DHCD will deem a multifamily district to comply so long as it doesn't require the multifamily uses to include units with age restrictions and does not put limits on the restrictions on the size of the units, the number of bedrooms, or the size of bedrooms or number of occupants. So let me talk a little bit about what reasonable size is. So it means have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre, subject to any other limitations, as I said, under forty, thirty-one in Title V, and under hazardous material, under the hazardous waste laws. This district must have a minimum gross density of fifteen units per acre. And Kristin's going to show you some examples of that that already exist, so you can get an idea of what that means for density that you already have in town. Not just individual parcels, but gross density. So you might have some in the district which have more densely populated than others, and you might have some areas in the district that might be a little bit under the fifteen units per acre, so long as the average over the entire district is fifteen units per acre. And you can have sub-districts within the multifamily district to comply with this requirement, with different density requirements, as I said, so long as the gross density meets the statutory requirement. I might also add here that multifamily means three units and above. Right, so you might have districts that are appropriate for triplexes. Right, condominiums or triplexes, or ones that are multi-story, multifamily buildings. So there's a whole mix that you can do, but not single or two. You have to take into consideration the following when you are calculating the density, the limitations on development resulting from inadequate water or wastewater infrastructure, and in areas not served by public sewer, applicable limitations on Title V, title restrictions, as I said earlier, that might exist of record, and physical limitations caused by the presence of water bodies or wetlands. So the town does have to do some digging, no pun intended, when they look into this to determine whether the land areas they're including are actually developable. It has to be located no more than a half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if that's applicable. So this is one area that we're going to look, try to see more guidance in our comment letter to DHCD. And Kristin's going to talk a little bit about that, because of course, you don't have any of those specific items or locations in town. You have bus stops, which are a contiguous, I mean, a continuous line, right, as opposed to one station. So we're not really sure how that's going to apply yet, but generally speaking, the distance from a transit station is measured from the boundary of any parcel of land owned by the public entity and used for purposes related to transit. For a community that has a transit station within its boundaries, then the location has to be within a half mile. Where there is no land within a half mile of the transit station that's appropriate for development, it's so long, it has to be created so long as it's easily accessible. Now I'm going to give you a sample of this. We, you know, we go back and forth. I live in Newburyport. We're an MBTA community. We have a commuter rail right in town. The town of Rowley has a commuter rail station. Right, it's in the middle of the Salt Marsh. There's no developable land around that. And so their town Rowley's required, just the minimum number of units you're required to allow created in your zoning is seven hundred and fifty units. So they're going to have to figure out a reasonable location that provides easy access to the transit, but is obviously not within a half mile of it. So those are the balances that communities are going to have to start to think about. Here, we have to figure out exactly what that half mile means, which is the clarification we're going to be seeking. And the last bullet, they do talk, if feasible, the area, if you don't have a station, then it has to be reasonable access to a transit station based upon existing street patterns, pedestrian connection, and bicycle lanes to be consistent with sustainable development principles. So we're going to, we need to get more clarification on that. So again, what are our requirements here? Submit comments to the guidelines, if any, by March thirty first, two thousand twenty-two. Present draft guidelines to the select board. Complete and submit the MBTA community information form and submit GIS updated parcels if we need to by May second of this year. Submit a determination of full compliance, if applicable, by December thirty first of this year. A proposed action plan by March first, two thousand twenty-three. And adopt multifamily zoning district by December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. And then, of course, submit the determination within ninety days to DHCD. I will say that because of the adoption of forty A, section nine, the amendments, these multifamily districts will be adopted at town meeting by simple majority vote, not your typical two-thirds. What happens if you don't comply? So you will lose and become ineligible for funding related to your housing choice grants, local capital fund project funding. Does anybody know what that is? That's actually the funding that comes from gambling revenue. And so far, it's really interesting discussion about where that money goes. There, it has been appropriated in the past, and it's up to the legislature and the governor, but they are supposed to fund local capital fund projects. So you wouldn't be eligible for that. And the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, you would not be eligible for. And then DHCD may, in its discretion, take non-compliance into consideration when making other discretionary grant awards and indicate that penalties may be more severe in the future. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristin. Ms. Russell?
Yep, thank you, thank you, Lisa. Good evening to everyone. Good presentation up to this point. So what I want to talk about is really more Burlington-specific, kind of what we're looking at, what, some, what are some of the things that we need to be taking into consideration as we continue to think about this? So just, this highlights, what this slide is, is a listing of the multifamily housing developments in Burlington that do have a density of fifteen units an acre or more. And that is it. As you can see, some of them are assisted living, some of them are, you know, older, newer. But what we can, what we glean from this calculation is that none of them today are by right, and a handful of them, a handful of them are not even currently allowed in the zoning district they sit. So none of these, none of the existing housing stock that meets the density would comply with the rest of the regulations. And then just quickly, that if you add all this up together, we're looking at about forty-five acres of property. So next slide, please. Um. Okay. Yes.
Wait, you want to, I think you skipped a, can you go back one?
I did, but it didn't.
There you go, there you go.
Yes, my slide is different than.
Made a spot.
No, I. Um, yeah, I'm sorry. The, this is not marked up the way that I had sent over earlier.
There's a hot, Kristin, the next one's a highlighted one.
The next one is, yeah. Let's go to this one, and then we'll go back if we need to. So what this, this slide is, is a, is just highlighting the age restricted, oh. Anyway, sorry. This side is highlighting the age restricted units. The ones in yellow, like deep yellow, sunshine yellow, are definitely age restricted. Heritage Stoneridge is partially age restricted. There's thirty-six units of, of the one eighty that are, that are age restricted there. So just to highlight that these would not count for that reason. Next slide, please.
If I could, Kristin, one moment. If you go back to the slide before, that's the example of the fifteen units of acre or more.
Yes. Yep, so these are all, as I said before, these are all fifteen minutes an acre or more, but I kind of described that in the slide before that. So we can continue. And then we get into the reasonable size calculations where, and I'll go into it a little bit more, but I think, you know, DHCD saying that, well, they have discretion here, but then having these hard numbers of five, twenty-five, and fifty. So even further this list, and this, this list here takes out all of those age restricted, and then further narrows it down to taking out projects that are on property less than five acres. Next slide, please. So just to graphically understand where we are. So our existing bus routes are shown here. I know this is not meant to be really a slide to be read, but just kind of understood spatially where things are. We have the MBTA bus route three fifty, three fifty-one, three fifty-two, and three fifty-four. For the most part, they hug the southern, kind of southern bit of Burlington, with the exception of up through Cambridge Street. If you look at the MOV parcels, those are existing multifamily units that are fifteen units or above, and they do relatively sit along those routes. As Lisa mentioned, we don't have, quote, a bus station, so we don't have that point where you draw a convenient circle around. What we can assume, but don't know, and this is certainly a question that we're putting in our comment letter, is if we don't have a point, does that assume that the bus lines, you're drawing a half mile from those lines themselves? So that's a question we have. Next slide. So what does this mean for Burlington? So we have done a good job creating multifamily. Currently, in Burlington, we have about thirty-three percent of our housing stock as multifamily. So the, what Lisa was mentioning before, the twenty percent number at a little over two thousand, that, that's twenty percent of your housing stock should be multifamily. We in Burlington have thirty-three percent. Also, we have been doing a good job of keeping pace. If you look at the, the table below the assessors data numbers, that in the seventies and eighties, we built multifamily housing, and the two thousand, and two thousand teens, and even now, we've, we've, we have done a very good job keeping pace and have been building multifamily housing throughout, other than the nineties. So we do meet the target percentage. I mean, that's one of many numbers that we have to really be looking at. We do not meet other requirements in the guidelines, such as the reasonable size district of a minimum of twenty-five. Beacon Village is the closest at twenty-two point seven acres. And we do not allow anything by right. And then I mentioned before that do we assume the half-mile corridor? Next slide, please. This is again, just to remind everyone where we are. So comments are due March thirty first. I am drafting a letter, which we, circulating around before the thirty-first. If anyone has any comments after this presentation, we certainly want to, yeah, open it up to folks to send comments to planningatberlington.org if you have comments, and certainly always call our office, the planning department office. So that's underway. The actions before May second, we are looking in, complete and submit the community information page. That's really a lot of the information I just presented. What do you have? Where is it? Does it meet the, all these different requirements? And as Lisa mentioned, updated GIS is all set. Next slide, please. Again, these are, so with this, as we map out, what do we need to be thinking about? Between the end of this year, between March first, two thousand twenty-three, and then, of course, the action that we need to take before December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. Next slide, please. So as mentioned, these are kind of the beginnings of the comments that we have. Reasonable size, Burlington's housing stock is very much a ton of single family and a bunch of projects that are over two hundred plus units. When we did the master plan, there was a heavy discussion on the need to diversify our housing stock, infill housing, finding different smaller scale unit types between townhouse, but also more senior friendly design of the flat kind of living, which we have actually done a pretty good job of moving that forward. But with the five-acre minimum, it's kind of discouraging those smaller projects that are super hard to get funded in the market anyway. So it's just another way of, why wouldn't we be really looking at more infill downtown, other, other types of projects? So I just, in general, think that we want to comment with the five-acre minimum. And to that twenty-five-acre, single district parcel, I don't know. The, the legislation says reasonable size. I guess overall, I think it's going to differ in each community and kind of where our existing planning has gone when public, public comment discussion and master plan in terms of our housing policy and goals. And I know the Housing Partnership is doing a, undertaking a housing needs assessment right now, and they'll be weighing in on some housing policy as we move forward in Burlington. But just certainly, I don't know. I guess just that reasonable size where they may accept it if, but really, it, how do we know if it's, if it is going to be accepted? So the half-mile requirement, not from a defined point, as I mentioned before. And then the determination of developable land puts a huge burden on communities in terms of having to do a parcel by parcel assessment of developable options within the boundaries of the district that we choose. So I know I've talked to others, but really pushing the, the state to kind of consider how, how our communities going to be able to do this. I mean, we in Burlington, we do have a good amount of professional staff, but we're also, the professional staff we have is, you know, very overwhelmed with what we already have on. So this is just kind of the, a highlight into some of the comments that we're looking at is in terms of, you know, we understand we want to create housing within our communities, but there's just, you know, how we go about that and with or without assistance from the state. And also, infrastructure needs, I think, needs to be more heavily considered in terms of what we can build. Or I, and as Lisa said, it's not build, but develop. It's not a production statute, but it's a, maybe you can. So it's a little bit unclear on some of those guidelines that we're looking for some clarification before they finalize the guidelines to moving forward. Next slide, please. So what we do need to do, we know of the three things in the statute is reasonable size, again, need clarification on that. Fifteen units per acre is in the statute. Fifteen units an acre will be always here. And the other is the distance from the bus, bus route, bus station, as well as the no age restrictions and, you know, family-friendly housing types. We need to look at and understand more about existing housing areas and how much that plays into the number in the, quote, production number? Does it all have to be new? What about existing, existing areas that we could produce potentially more in certain areas within those existing areas? And then evaluate new areas that we may be considering for housing options by rate. And that we need to do this by, really by the end of the year. I think the statute and the guidelines are a little bit unclear. And Lisa, I feel free to chime in, but, you know, it says, must be completed by March first, two thousand twenty-three, but in the guidelines, it says must be approved by DHCD on March first, two thousand twenty-three. So, which is it? So, and then, again, we need to revise the zoning by December thirty first, two thousand twenty-three. I mean, we're lucky that we have three town meetings a year, but, um. Anyway, overall, Burlington is in a much better position than a lot of communities that I've talked to about where they're going to go with this. I mean, as Lisa mentioned, with Rowley and the Salt Marsh, and, you know, barely professional staff to do it. So, um, anyway, I, I think the message here, I think, I, I don't think it's, oh, my goodness, how are we going to do this? Is I think we can be strategic about it. And I think we will be able to meet the, whatever exact guidelines will be in the future, but I, I do think there's a path forward. I don't think we're going to be in a position where we're going to have to forego very important infrastructure funding that we have proven to need over the last couple of years. very important infrastructure funding that we have proven to need over the last couple of years, and actually have done a very good job working toward getting. So, um, so anyway, that's all I have. At this point, and I think Lisa and I will probably be open for questions.
Right. Sorry, one other thing. I will say that you you don't have to create it new. But it has to be by right. So, um, so that's that's the rub, right? So as you saw on that first chart from Kristen, you have all of this great multifamily housing, but none of it's by right. So you would have to change those districts if they qualified to be by right. Then you'd have to take out the age restriction, right? And make sure that it was sufficient for families with children. So those units that were there that were age restricted couldn't count. You could turn the district over to be by right. So there's some, I think there's some things that you can do with that. I don't, there's no clear path right now. I think there's going to be a lot of communication with D H C D as we're developing the zoning moving forward or doing the plan that to show the action plan to show that what you currently have. But you can use, you can use existing zoning and existing housing if they meet the criteria. If you were able to do that and submit it on December 40th, December 1st of this year and prove that you've met it, then you'd be done. But most communities are not going to be able to do that. Thank you, Lisa. So we're happy to answer any questions.
Kristen, thank you for that presentation as well. Mr. Hogan.
Lisa, a couple of times during your presentation, you talked about the need to get some clarification on some things. Do you foresee any situation where the timetable is going to come and go and not getting that clarification is going to cause any problems?
Um, I think that we have to proceed under the current timeframes. I suspect that D H C D will try to turn these guidelines around pretty quickly after they receive public comment because they don't want to back off on any of the timeframes. So I'm hopeful that they will do, you know, they'll give us the time necessary or give us the answers quickly. They have been pretty responsive to date and have done a ton of outreach to to the municipalities, to administration, through, uh, through the regional planning agencies. They're doing a lot of outreach. So I'm hopeful that they will be as engaged moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Priest?
Nothing right now.
Mr. Randy?
There's a million of them. I just don't know when I'm going to ask them all. I have a lot of questions. I just I don't know where to start. There's a lot there. A lot of timeframes. A lot of this seems to do with the planning board. But they're just looking for approval from us to start tonight, but to approve this move forward, right?
So all we, you don't need to take any votes tonight. We just need to have made this presentation to you about what's required. That's all that we need to do. Your approvals moving forward are going to be, you know, actually, the board is not required to approve anything. These are zoning amendments. So their town meeting and planning board and then by law review committee and land use board, but this board won't have to approve anything except for the submissions.
Looking into the future of it all, seeing that these communities, as you say, age restriction, what about the ones that are 55 and older, that those go away?
Those, no, no, those, um, so those are age restricted, obviously. They don't have to go away. Nobody, nobody's making those go away. But if you have an age restricted multifamily housing unit, it can't count towards this requirement.
So there's a new project going up with a piano store. There's now there's one going in over there. I don't know what they they want like 100 units, but that's probably not going to happen, but that would help us out at some point if it was 75 or whatever.
If it already went through permitting, it permitted special permit, so it's not by right.
Okay.
So that doesn't, it wouldn't count.
By right. That's right. That's a key word. I did write that.
By right.
By right.
So that's a project, um, Lisa, that is going through proposed, uh, proposed zoning amendment right now.
Okay.
Only on three and a half acres is proposed to be by right, but that gets to the kind of reasonable size question.
Yeah, these are just comments more than the questions for me. I didn't. In here somewhere, uh, 2086. How close are we to that?
So as Kristen, and Kristen can answer this a little bit, but as Kristen showed in her, um, chart, you actually of that 2086, I don't know that you have any that qualify. Is that right, Kristen?
So we don't have any that qualify because nothing is by right and or not even allowed in the zoning district. So we have, we do have 33% of the housing stock is multifamily, three units or more. It's just to to Lisa's point, what we have doesn't meet the other aspects of the criteria. But and that's why I was mentioning that, you know, we do have 33%. They're looking to make sure a community has 20%, but of of all of those 33%, they don't meet the other aspects of the criteria that's required. So that's one of those things we need to look at and review.
So to, to actually piggyback on the the age restriction question, so when I talked about deed restrictions, that was one of the things. So if you laid a by right zoning overlay district over, you know, 200 age restricted units right now that went in by special permit, but you overlaid a by right district on it, it still wouldn't count because you have a deed restriction to the over 55 requirement.
But Lisa, the, you know, on the contrary of that, you could have a existing, meaning that you, like, if you had Beacon Village that's existing, if we made the R G zoning district a by right zoning district that met all of those other criteria, those units could count.
But so I'm not familiar. Is it age restricted?
No.
Okay, so that's correct.
Well, we're really talking about a lot of planning board issues and then the town meeting issues.
Correct.
Coming in front of us. There's really not that much coming in front of us, just that we all want to understand this.
Yeah, you're definitely going to wonder, because eventually, let's think about it, may infrastructure improvements, they have to eventually come in front of you, things like that.
Right.
But not, but only when it starts to get built.
One more question. The town center, uh, the the overlay district, how big is that area? From from the high school to, where is that to 25 acres or is it too narrow for the 25 acres they were talking about earlier?
The town center in total is 127 acres, which obviously some of which is, um, a lot of town owned property.
All right, just just curious. I didn't know how big that was. All right, thank you.
I didn't know, Mr. Segura, I was just going to say Melissa has her hand up, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Melissa, let me just get Mr. Ryan in first and then I'll get to you. Michael?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Lisa. You touched on accessory dwelling units at the beginning of your remarks, and I'm going to circle back to that at a later date. So the public comment period, okay, for having this this meeting tonight is, is, do we have way for people between now and the month who can't attend tonight or may not have time to get here first? Do we have something in place for people to be able to participate?
Sure, they could just reach out to select board office or the planning board office, uh, you know, whatever they're they're most familiar with, send us an email and we'll take all the comments into consideration.
So you also mentioned, um, under the new legislation, let's just take, for example, the Beacon Village that Kristen alluded to earlier. If part of our solution was to go to town meeting and say, we want to make this property a by right property, that would require a vote of town meeting, just a simple majority, is that correct?
It would be, well, so I I'm not familiar with the proposals. This is zoning change that we're talking about for the fall, I mean, for the May town meeting. So if it's multifamily and it's either in a town center or near transit, and there's a definition for that, or a densely populated area, then it's a simple, so that's just like, I'm just, this is a big explanation without seeing that area. It would be a simple majority vote at town meeting.
Yeah, I'm not even sure. That might have been a bad example, because I don't know that if it's within half a mile of transit.
But it also can be a town center.
It's a little bit on the outskirts of town, but and
My, there, yeah, that one may or may not, but I think that's a lot of what the clarifying questions that we're trying to figure out.
And and finally, I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so let me wrap it up here. You mentioned 40R, some of your comments earlier. How does that differ? Do they think that's got some connection to MBTA as well? Right, but it's but it's not exactly what we're talking about.
Right. So general chapter 40R is the original smart growth zoning that was passed by, I believe Governor Romney was in office, I think, when it was passed. And the town would have to adopt that. And a 40R zoning is near transit, reuse of a dilapidated site like an old hazardous mill site, old, old industrial site, or one that the D H C D finds appropriate. So there's three standards for a 40R site. 40R sites can be also be mixed use. And 40R is much like what they're requiring here. It's design review and it's not a special permit. Uh, and you are required to have under 40R at least 10% affordable units, and then they go up. So there is an affordability requirement, and there's also a density requirement in a 40R district. This zoning does not require any affordability requirement. You would rely on your town's inclusionary zoning requirements to accomplish that in these developments. But otherwise, 40R requires an affordability requirement where this does not.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Michael. Melissa, I'll get to you in one second. I just want to finish with the board, and I actually have a couple of questions. This applies to us because we have buses running through Burlington, correct?
That's correct.
To follow up on what Mike's point was, if we, and Melissa, this is probably, I'm sorry, but Kristen, this is better for you. A better question for you. If we were able to rezone certain areas like Beacon Village or any other area to be in it, a by right district, is there any way that we could get a theoretical estimate of how many units we would have if we were to redistrict this complex, that complex? Is is that a possibility?
So that's, and that's why it was directly pointed out in the slide of kind of next steps. I think it's a two-fold approach. What do we have? Look at that existing zoning. Do we want to modify existing zoning for existing housing that is and create that already exists to be, to meet all of these requirements. But I I don't think there's any scenario where we look at existing housing stock and only do that, and it meets everything. I think we're going to have to have a two-fold approach where it's a balance of areas of existing housing that the zoning does not meet these requirements that we could modify, coupled with an identification of some new areas that we look at as well.
Thank you, because that was my, what I'm trying to get at is if we can rezone as much as much of the current, as many as the current complexes that we have, that's less that we have to create because we've already resoned it. But regardless of Beacon Village, here, my other question, if, now, I think there's a MBTA line, a bus line in Woburn that's within a half mile of Beacon Village, can that be used to satisfy one criteria?
Go on, go on, Lisa.
No, you're more familiar with the geography, so go ahead.
Um, so I would say, you know, half a mile from a bus station, I would say it should be considered. It's, it's a good question, and I think, you know, we're looking, as I mentioned, we don't have that single point. So we have those lines and what are kind of the areas around those lines. And one of the exercises that we need to do is map that, kind of those mile corridors on each side of the those bus lines. So I think that's a very good question, and I think it should be considered. And it's one of, it's something that we'll be clarifying in the letter.
But that half mile doesn't have to be in your town. It just has to be any.
Right. So we're, we're, Burlington's a bus stop community, not an adjacent community, but to Kristen's point, it doesn't make sense that if you're allowing it within a half mile of the community that has the bus station, and then there's an adjacent community that's also within a half mile of that bus station, you should, you should count it. It meets the same goal. So long as the bus station is easily to get, is easy and direct to get to. So those are the kinds of things that during that, the year process, trying to figure out what counts and what doesn't count, that we need to be getting confirmation from D H C D. Yes, this would count even though it's in a different community so that we can check that box and try to reuse, if you will, the existing multifamily housing that would count and then understand how you'd have to create more.
Thank you. Because I think if that's the case, I think Kimball, Kimball Tower has been qualified as well, because they're right on the moving line. Uh, anything more from the board before I go to Melissa? All right, Melissa Tantaklis. You're up.
Um, thank you, I guess, for the record, Melissa Tantaklis, Economic Development. I think part of, you know, how I see some of the MBTA new regs is really to help us think about how to be a little bit more transient oriented, transient, transit oriented development wise and thinking as we kind of continue to, you know, grow and shape the development that, you know, coming to our town. One thing to think about, you know, is, you know, exactly that. What what areas do we have that would currently qualify? But also, where can we leverage this development? I think, you know, one thing that's been talked about is mixed use. A by right area with residential and commercial is also would qualify if the residential is by right. So it's, that's something to, you know, think about. And I guess also, you know, the rules, you know, as Kristen and Lisa have emphasized, they're still forming. So they're looking for our input. So all these questions that we're pulling from this meeting need to go in a written form so that we can really document that, so that when they do create these rules, you know, communities like ours, you know, is very much heard, like our voice is heard. And I just, I I just want to emphasize that there, we're looking for clarification, but we're also telling them what we'd like to see in these new rules as they kind of finalize things. And I feel like that's kind of important as we kind of move forward. A couple other things that, you know, I think have been talked about in different areas, you know, the corridors, our bus, you know, our bus quarters are important. The North Suburban Planning Council has identified the mall, for example, as a mobility hub. And that area has, you know, not only a couple of bus lines going in, but it has, you know, some alternative modes of transportation. And it's just interesting to think of how we can leverage some of our existing commercial environment to think about potential infill, whether it's small. Um, and this is kind of the thinking we've been doing around the Mall Road and Middlesex Turnpike Initiative. There's a nice, you know, compliment, if you will, if we can kind of harness some of the development potential that, you know, or development demand that's occurring here along 128 and use it to guide it to how we want, want to see it. And I think it almost complements well with the MBTA regs here, MBTA communities. So those are a couple of thoughts that I had, you know, as we're talking about this.
Thank you, Melissa. Anything further on the presentation?
Questions from the audience?
Do we take audience questions? Pardon me, audience questions?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Anybody in the room that wants to talk or ask a question about this agenda item? None. Okay, seeing none. Anybody on Webex that wants to ask a question regarding this item? John Ila, Mr. Ila, go ahead.
Ah, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. John Iler, Town Meeting, Mayor Precinct 6. I had a question, a suggestion. So the question I had was, I, I, it seemed a little inconsistent. I I heard that we have 3,748 multifamily housing units currently. That's 33% of the stock. So that was one data point. But the other data point that seemed inconsistent is the the spreadsheet you were showing with our current multifamily housing. Only added up to 1,200. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the discrepancy between those two. Were they counting different things or?
So I can answer that question. So the spreadsheet was narrowed down to only those units that were 15 units an acre or more. The multifamily 20% is anything three units or above. So there's a lot, there's a much longer spreadsheet with a lot more information and projects on it. The spreadsheet that we were showing was really because the statute says 15 units, we know that is an unchanged criteria within the MBTA community's requirement. So therefore, that's why we wanted to pull those out and highlight that those projects, while they meet that 15 units an acre, they don't meet all the other criteria for, you know, a number of different reasons.
Got it. Okay, that that explains that the density was too low on those. Okay. Okay, so I, I guess what, what I would suggest, my understanding is, you know, the way the law is written, and, or at least as it's presented here, and from what I've seen it's written, it, it is not quite vague, but it's not highly specified. It's giving terms saying, you know, it has to be reasonable and so on. And all these numbers, like the 15 units per acre, the 25 acre, you know, minimum for at least one part of it and so on, are coming from the DHCD guidelines. So I, my assumption is that means, you know, that means with our feedback, we could suggest changes to those guidelines still by the end of the month. So I guess what I would suggest is, given it, you know, their goal is ostensibly to create more housing through this multifamily mechanism, I, I would suggest that we recommend changes to the guidelines that make it a little bit easier for us to count a large fraction of what we have already. So I, you know, I would suggest that, you know, one, we get them to reduce the guideline for the single, you know, at least one parcel of 25 acres, get that reduced to 20, so that Beacon Village would, you know, we could work that in with easier changes. And the, the other suggestion I would say is, if you, you know, just to pick a number, if, if you're, you know, 50% above the requirement, so to speak, you know, where our requirement is 20%, you know, if the community is significantly above that, and, you know, we can, you know, figure out what the right number is. But if a community is significantly above that, that some relaxed guidelines would apply. And, you know, again, we would, you know, suggest relaxing various guidelines that would be advantageous to counting more of what we have. Because I, I think the point is, we're, you know, we're contributing our fair share of housing. We should get credit for that. You know, the fact that we built it well before it was a requirement shouldn't be held against us. You know, we don't have the large undeveloped tracts of land that other towns may have, you know, with, with their five acre zoning or whatever, where they have this flexibility to, to throw in a bunch of things. So, so I, I guess I would suggest we take advantage of the comment period to make suggestions to get the guidelines a little more in line with accepting what we have. So that, that's the suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I just want to throw one clarification out there. The, actually, the only number that is in the statute is 15 units per acre. So that's, that's not going to change, as Kristen said earlier. The rest, we certainly can push back on, as John suggested.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else in WebEx that wants to discuss this item, the MBTA presentation? Hey, seeing none? Thank you for turning me in. Thank you, Kristen. Thank you, Melissa. Subcommittee reports. So Randy?
No, sir, nothing tonight.
Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
The DPW building. It just took me on a tour. Building, it is absolutely beautiful. If you like dirt floors and steel showing up, and wires hanging all over the place, it's beautiful. It's not with new concrete. New concrete's coming in. What a great job they're doing down there. And it is big. It is big. It's beautiful. I love walking through it, seeing the progression take place. Yeah, absolutely. These guys should be really happy when it's done. And I think it's right on track, right? A little bit, yeah, it's on track. All the water will be cleaned up. It looks, it's a great job. That's it. That's all I got.
Mr. Priest?
None tonight. Thank you.
I'm good, thank you. And the chair has none either. Mr. Segre with Town Administrators report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one thing I wanted to update the board on was, we received a letter from the state just towards the end of last week, announcing to us that they will discontinue servicing us for the Ceil or Waits and Measures program. A little disappointed and a little surprised. It was probably over 10 years ago that the state aggressively recruited us to be a part of their program. So under the law, they're not required to do our ceiling services. So John Daneseo and I are going to be reviewing various other options available to the town. And we've also spoken to Representative Gordon's office, just to let him know, you know, we may need a little bit more time. The letter specified that they wanted to wrap up on June 30th, which is a really short turnaround time. So we're going to have to push back on that a little bit. And some of the options we would consider is a private contractor, possible partnership with another community, or something, something of that nature.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. New business, old business, none of that? Citizens Time. I know we have a lot of people that want to talk on Citizens Time. We're going to start with the people in the room. Again, this is, Citizens Time is when a person, you know, citizen gets to say what they want to say, but it's not a negotiation discussion between the board and the person making the comments. Because we see a lot of people that want to probably say something, we're going to have to limit this to probably two minutes a person, I would say, just to get your comment out there. So who wants, in the room wants to go first? Who has, who's here for Citizens Time, I should say? Sherry, why don't you come up and just introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sherry Ellis, resident.
The moderator's over there.
Mr. Chairman. One of those, one of those. Anyway, Sherry Ellis, resident of Burlington, also a town meeting member. And I wanted to follow up on an agenda item that was discussed at the last select board meeting on February 28th, specifically Agenda Item 416, the Select Board's DEI Subcommittee Report. And I want to acknowledge the comments from you, Mr. Chair, and Mr. Hogan, Mr. Tigas this evening. Unfortunately, I don't think many people here or many people in the audience were able to hear those comments. And I'm disheartened that a follow-up item was not placed on the agenda for tonight. Regardless of whether there was to be a discussion on the matter tonight or at a future meeting, there should have been an agenda item posted to let residents know that the matter, that this matter is of importance to the board members. Discussing important matters such as this, under Subcommittee Reports, or old business or new business, agenda items doesn't really give the residents reasonable knowledge of the matters that are going to be discussed for tonight. And that's something that the open meeting law is really trying to press and requires. Understanding that the agenda tonight was committed to a presentation, a very good presentation, thank you. A mention that it would be further discussed at a future meeting would have gone a long way to acknowledge the importance of this topic. Consideration and respect of the members of the board's own Subcommittee, I believe, should be on the forefront of the Select Board members' minds. That being said, and not wanting to delve into the specifics of the matter, as it's late, and I will respectfully ask that an agenda item be placed on your next Select Board meeting of March 28th, in order that the members can address in some manner of action the decisions which the Subcommittee requested from you in their two-page executive summary that was presented at the last meeting. And those include creating a philosophy statement for the community, determining definitions of the DEI-related terms, amending your mission statement to include references to responsibilities of all who reside in Burlington, and to lead negotiations for contracts to update and include language. Some sort of an action item should be in place. What you choose to do with those requests, I think you would want the residents of the town to know. I look forward to the board's response to the report. And hopefully, some of the residents in town will watch the meeting on recording. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Anybody else in this room, the meeting room, that wants to make a comment under Citizens Time? Seeing none, I'll put it out to the WebEx. Anybody out in the WebEx want to make a comment? Make a comment under Citizens Time. Someone named Martin, Mr. Chairman? Okay, the person whose only name is showing is Martin. Can you please identify yourself?
Yes, my name is Lois Smith-Martin. I am a town meeting member from Precinct 7. And I just want to support Sherry Ellis's comments. I think all that she said is valid and should be considered.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Is that it? Who else? I don't see anyone else in the WebEx, Mr. Chairman. Nobody else for Citizens Time? Okay, in that case, I'll be looking for motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.
All those in favor? Close abstaining. Meeting adjourned.